Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our August 10th study session for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. I guess it's appropriate to welcome Director Echols, who is first time on the dais after election. I will say anything about your haircut because I miss mine too, but welcome aboard, buddy.
Hey, thank you very much and it's nice to finally be seated in person.
It is. And welcome to our guest. Madam Clerk, if you do the roll call, please.
Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Carey. Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert Uten.
And Director Uten is not with us this morning. He's out of camp. Okay, this is a time for public comments, time set aside for those of you in the audience that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda for this morning. And Madam Clerk, are we on, we're not on Zoom or do we have Zoom participants?
We do have a Zoom participants this morning, yes, and I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Then if there's no public comments, we'll move to our items of study under C and go to the July 2021 Code Enforcement Officer Report.
Morning, David. Morning, Vice President Schaefer. Good morning, Board. This morning is my July report for code enforcement. The report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement for the month of July. The CMSD intern code enforcement officer focuses efforts on patrol in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within the public view. Thank you. In the month of July, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the CMSD intern code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most of scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in early morning hours. In order to address resident concerns, the code enforcement officers patrolling streets by 6:30 a.m. Included is the ordinance for scavenging. President Uten requested that we add this to the report. The operations code for scavenging and the operations code for public carts in view, or carts in public view, I apologize. So this month of July, I found 23 scavengers in the carts throughout the area. Maps are enclosed. Also during the month of July, I took care of trash container enforcement. There were a few customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following is a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by courtesy notice process. 144 trash carts in public view for the month of July. Any questions for scavenging or public carts in, or carts in public view?
I have a question. You know, we always get the report from Pepper Tree. Is it the same person? Is it a different person? I know you've been on the job for a short time, but is it the same person?
Actually, that was the same individual. I have not seen him since. My second contact, he told me that he was going to be getting off the streets, going checking himself into a detox center. This is probably a gentleman in his 70s at least. Disabled, riding a bicycle. And all these scavenging accounts have been senior citizens in our city, which has been very heartbreaking to see. You know, citizens in our city that are having to, you know, scavenge in the trash carts to supplement their incomes. But I do enlighten them of our ordinance and also try to, you know, ask them if, you know, they've been to, you know, maybe the senior center or reached out to some other agencies. I also suggest maybe we have a flyer or something that I could hand off to them. The city of Costa Mesa gives transients a little packets of information and some of those things are agencies that they can, you know, possibly get some assistance from. Just an idea. Mike Carey brought it to my attention that OCC is going to be opening up or is currently open. And so he suggested or he mentioned that we might see an increase in transient activity and scavenging into the trash carts. Unfortunately, I haven't seen that so far, but I'm, you know, out there every morning looking for it. Is there any other questions?
I was just going to say something about the flyers, but you beat me to it. I wondered how you went about with this, being that you're fairly new at this. You give them a first warning and then the second warning is a little different?
I basically am very, you know, very kind. I'm just a kind-hearted guy. I'm not that guy who's going to be out, you know, trying to, you know, be the tough guy about trash, you know, and scavenging. But I do enlighten them that there is an ordinance and there is a process. So, I mean, if this is a continual thing, I don't want to have to cite you, but that could be, you know, a result. Some type of a resolution to the problem, but I think most of them are understanding and.
Maybe we could see if the city would be willing to let us go put our name on this flyer too, so that we don't have to repeat a couple of flyers.
Yeah, I've reached out to Mike Brumbaugh, who's, you know, the code enforcement officer. His office is actually right around the corner at the shelter. It's just been difficult. I know he's busy and so I'll try another attempt via.
Thank you. You're doing a good job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And again, nice to meet you, Director Echols, and welcome back.
Absolutely. Just to tag to what Director Perry said about the alley on Royal Palm, my office is right there. And so I, on a daily basis, I see those same folks. It's kind of a perfect scenario on Royal Palm because it's, it's hidden.
It is. And, you know, the people in the apartment complex, they're, they're not going to be getting involved with that.
They don't. And all of the, you know, by city ordinance, all of the, whether they're individual cans or if they use bins, they're all behind, not locked, but they're all in enclosures. So it makes kind of a perfect storm for scavenging. I mean, they're going up and down an alley. It's only trucks and, you know, other people that are, that are needing that alley. It's not like police or anybody else is in that alley a lot. So I appreciate the attention to Royal Palm and as Art said, it's the same, I see the same people. And those same ones that you've already talked to, you know, you're going to see them again. And the gentleman that you're talking about, I've seen him pretty frequently and it's just one of those, it's kind of a tough situation, you know. I appreciate the effort that you do, David, because you are a pretty compassionate guy. I mean, even with no hair, you seem to do a pretty good job. Go ahead, Art.
Okay, back to the flyer idea, Scott. Back to the flyer idea. Can we coordinate that with the city to have those handed to David that he can pass out? There's what's, what do you see as a problem with doing that?
There shouldn't be a problem at all. No, we can, I'll talk more about.
I think that's a great idea because they do have the shelter and other things that can be useful to the citizens. And I'm not sure if they all live in Costa Mesa, but it doesn't matter, you know. Okay, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Yeah, I just thought, you know, they, they are handing that out and I'm running into a lot of situations where that could be helpful to some of these people. Another outlet to, you know, I know they're not into the trash carts because they want to be. I mean, who wants to go dig into trash? Yeah, there, there are a few people that I've run into on a regular basis. They've just kind of changed their areas. This particular gentleman off of Pepper Tree, I think is limited with his area because of his physical situation and, you know, confined basically to a bicycle. So, but thank you very much. I appreciate that.
One other thought. Do you do have other cities, Mike, at all? Do they have something that they pass out at other cities?
It would mostly be handled by code enforcement in other cities because they don't have sanitary districts, most of them.
That's true.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
Just a follow-up and a question maybe. Did you make, a lot of these people you think may be homeless?
I believe so. This particular gentleman that we're talking to off the Pepper Tree area, I can guarantee he mentioned to me that he was homeless. And, and some of the other people are just residents, I think, of the area. Once I catch them, they kind of know, like, I better change my location. But some of these people know our trash days. I'm catching them in different areas, so they've gone on to the website or just over time have figured out what areas are trash days. And then there, there they are. But those people are usually driving. Yes, very sad to see seniors in our community, you know, in the trash carts. But again, we still have to follow the rules. I still have to do my job and then follow the rules. So again, I'm focusing my efforts on those areas that I've been catching them, especially the alleys. So hopefully the patrols and the increased presence will curb some of that activity.
Just as a follow-up to Secretary Schaefer about the flyer and all this. You know, it might be interesting to contact the Trellis Street Team. I mean, this is what they do. And these scavengers are going out on trash days. If maybe there could be a coordinated effort, again, that's not your responsibility, but maybe we could contact the Trellis Street Team and just say, hey, want to go out to different parts of the neighborhood, and they do already, but on trash days. And at the end of the day, we want these people off the street and getting them help. And so it's just an idea to maybe work with our Trellis partners because this is what they do and they know how to operate. So just another suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Sir?
Thank you.
Have a good day. We have, it's a pleasure of everybody else. Scott is asked to take item three and move it up now. We've switched two and three. Is that okay with everybody? All right, then we'll go to item three, missed trash collections. And Scott, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good morning, Board of Directors. On June 8th, the Board denied CRNR's request for a fee adjustment due to concerns regarding the level of service the community has been receiving lately. Specifically, the community has been experiencing more than usual incidents of missed trash and/or organic trash carts emptied on the regularly scheduled collection day. The Board wanted CRNR to improve their level of service before considering a fee adjustment again in January 2022. On July 13th, the Board established performance measurement benchmarks to engage in the level of service provided to determine if said service has improved during the next six months. As you can see in your staff report, in the month of July, the district received 94 complaints. And in your staff report is a list of streets that were, where the carts were missed. As of yesterday, the number of complaints we received in August is 17. Now, the missed trash collections can be attributed to many factors. It could be contributed to unit breakdowns, unscheduled leave from drivers, COVID-19 testing, hot load, which is when the material in the truck will catch fire, and that's, that's not unusual. It's happened before in the past. Cart's not placed on the curb the night before. Sometimes cars are parked too close to the trash containers, so the drivers are, will not pick them up because of their fear of damaging the cars. Or another incident, drivers just not familiar with the routes. If they're, if they're short on staff and drivers, they'll pull drivers from other cities and they're not just not familiar with the routes and they can miss some trash carts. The one area that has greatly improved, I will admit, is their communications with us. We stress strongly that they need to communicate with us when there's like a truck breakdown so we can notify the public. They have been doing that. They've been doing great communicating with us. And just last week on August 5th, staff, which was between myself and Nabilah, had the meeting with CRNR. We're starting a monthly, standard monthly meetings to go over the level of service and the performance measure, performance measure benchmarks. And so that's good. So we're continuing with our, with our communications. Today, I want to introduce you to two new executive leaders, leadership for CRNR. They are our new reps, our new executive leadership, and that's Julie Beretta. Did I say that right? Beretta, thank you. Beretta, Regional Vice President and Chip Monaco, Regional Vice President. And I believe they want to say a few things to the board, so if they would like to.
Good morning, Vice President Schaefer and Board members. Wish I could be here for the first time under a different situation, but that is okay. I'm here today to put a name with a face and also want to talk about a transition that our ownership has made as far as your lead contacts for the CMSD contract and services we provide. So myself will be the lead contract liaison, but my very worthy background is Chip Monaco. He'll be secondary. Probably for the next six months, you will see us both on a regular basis. And then not to forget the person that you all know very well, who has been a member of your community, Mike Carey. He will also be part of the team as we transition into, into the new leadership role for CMSD. I'm also a Costa Mesa resident, so this is very important to me. I will share with you that I follow up to what Mr. Carroll has shared, that unfortunately, we are still, for better words, just the pandemic still exists as far as driver shortages. I think we all see it on the news every single day. It doesn't matter what business you're in. Could be the airlines, it's restaurants, Amazon, any company, we continue to see employee shortages. And we are diligently, I assure you, we interview on a daily basis. I sit next to our conference room where we see probably two to three people every single day come in applying for jobs in different capacities. And so we are committed to you and we are going to right this ship. Chip and I are very focused, meeting with operations on a daily basis as a follow-up and a backup to Mike, which he has already done a tremendous job. But I think Mr. Carroll hit the nail on the head. It's all about communication. And if we know we have a problem, whether it's a breakdown, callouts, whatever the case may be, we, we are here. Our ownership has made it clear that Costa Mesa is number one for the company. I think you know our corporate office is in Stanton and I sit upstairs right next to the owners. And so it's just a walk to the next door to say, hey, we have a problem. I need your help. And so we are here and as I mentioned, we are committed. We know our timeline and the goals have been set before us and we will meet those goals. And we will, as I mentioned, right this ship and get service back to where the residents of Costa Mesa deserve.
Thank you for your comments. Do you mind taking any questions if we have?
Happy to.
Arlene, go ahead.
Out of curiosity, do you have this problem with other areas, other?
Unfortunately, yes. I would, I'd have to say Scott kind of mentioned quite a few of them as far as the driver shortages, COVID testing, even as far as getting vaccinations. We had callouts after with folks not feeling well. In the month of July, we did experience also some delays due to the Fourth of July holiday and we have talked about that internally. If that's, whether or not we want to observe, if a holiday falls on a weekend, this has been a lot of discussion. And a lot of discussion was, we probably should have just taken the day off. We decided to work on that Monday and a lot of folks did not put their carts out. And that's across our company, wasn't just in Costa Mesa. So there's been a lot of discussion, the next time the holiday falls on a Sunday, because banks and schools, other government agencies were closed. Everyone just assumed trash was closed. It doesn't matter how much notification you do. Folks just thought that we were still closed. That was some of the, some of the, the lead to those higher misses. But I wish I could say trash isn't a real difficult thing. You put your cart out, the truck comes by and we pick it up. But when you have these other factors, it makes it difficult. And unfortunately, it's, it's not just Costa Mesa. And this is something that we see. We get articles on a regular basis, Chip, Mike and I, in our industry. There's some industry newsletters that we get and every company across the nation in our business is dealing with the same situation, unfortunately.
Do you have a communications type of situation where you have somebody on standby? If someone's sick, you can call somebody right away and say, can you do that one?
So we do. So it's, it's common in our business that we have what we refer to as relief drivers. So you have X amount of relief drivers based on the total number of routes. But as I mentioned, because of what's happened with driver shortages, we have several open requisitions. So the relief drivers that we have aren't enough to cover the open positions. And so Mr. Carroll kind of referenced it in his opening comments that we are bringing drivers, so the regular drivers that are scheduled to service the city of Costa Mesa, go out with their routes. But if we have what we refer to as an open route where a driver calls out or someone injures themselves, whatever the case may be, or if a truck breaks down, when the drivers in another city are finished completing their route, they come into the yard, we give them maps, and then they head out to Costa Mesa. And they're following the routes that we've given them off of a map and picking up, picking up those areas.
First question, Scott. You may not know the exact numbers, of course, but the beginning COVID, year and a half ago, however long it's been, can never remember. But the complaints say a year and a half ago or during COVID, has it gone up more recently? I mean, it seems like it's a lot of numbers in the last several months, or have we really been officially tracked it?
Yes, and it's gone up significantly since, since COVID. We reported that in our, our performance audit to the Board. It's, it's more than doubled, I believe. Now, we know, we understand there's no such thing as, as zero missed collections. We know it's going to happen. We understand that. But the jump from like an average of 50 a year to over 200, that's significant.
Okay, thank you. And then, so with that, you know, I, I think during COVID, especially at the beginning where no one knew anything and you would have probably drivers, it was a mess. I mean, at this point, yes, and I know the Delta and all that, that's bringing new things. But I would think that driver misses, new hires, things like that would improve at this stage in this COVID experience. But it seems like the complaints are going up. Is there anything that maybe we don't know within the company?
I know. I think, like I mentioned, as far as the industry goes, it's something that we're all experiencing. We have learned a lot, though. Chip's going to come in, he wants to say a few things. But we have learned a lot. We talked about this, even when, during last year in COVID. Something interesting that impacted us that we didn't expect is when COVID hit and the state shut down and everyone worked from home. We've had more bulky items put out at the curb than we have ever experienced. I've been in the business for 33 years and it's just something we have never seen before. And that's because everyone was home doing their DIY projects. They were cleaning out their garage. They thought, well, I'm home and I'm working remote, but I might as well clean stuff up. And so that was another thing and it actually has not decreased much. And it's a good thing, right? So you don't have illegal dumping. People aren't going behind shopping centers and dumping their items. All of our services provide a bulky item pickup, but we are, we have seen an unprecedented amount. And so we have geared up and we're, we're not going to probably back down as far as increased hiring. So we, we have had to adjust and learn from this. And I think that, you know, a lot of corporations that we've all heard or read about are probably going to continue with a hybrid. They're going to have folks continue to work from home. So we've also seen more wasted the curb than we had. If you look at the tonnages, and I don't know if that's something that's been talked about in prior meetings, but residential tonnage, the trash we collect at home has increased, but the business waste has decreased because folks are at home. And we don't, we don't completely expect to see it shift back the way it was because we believe this hybrid model that some corporations are looking at it as measures to save money, cut costs on the business. And so we are having to just adjust to the new normal and increase more residential drivers because our commercial staff, and we are doing some shifts as well. We have shifted some drivers from residential to commercial. But it's definitely, I mean, I, we, we were looking at beggy. We're looking at employee referral programs, trying to find family, friends that you know that drive and do some referral programs. We're, we're doing everything we can, but Chip, do you want to add?
Good morning, Directors. We, we were optimistic after the first of the year that things were going to normalize. Unfortunately, we were wrong because as people started to get vaccinations, state law required companies to give people time off. A lot of our drivers took that additional time off after each vaccination shot created even more of a driver shortage. The unemployment laws and the, the state is requiring us to allow them extended time off. So there's just an employee shortage in every industry. And we're shocked, to be honest with you, that we're, we're on the uptick now because we thought we would be gliding down and entering into a new normal. So I think a lot of the state laws and a lot of the state accommodations for COVID are really creating an enormous amount of pressure on every industry right now, certainly us. We have drivers out every single day for a variety of reasons, largely the primary reason has been COVID.
And so that actually leads me to my next question. There's a few things in here. I mean, the labor shortage, we all know in the state and even the feds, the whole thing. We got that. There's only so much you can do. Now, unscheduled leave from drivers, does that mean what you just said, that they just chose to take a few days off after getting vaccinated? Is that what that's referring to?
It's non, non-approved leave. It would be like sick leave or unapproved by the manager leave where the employee calls in out that day. Or it would be because of a doctor's note and the state requires us to grant that. It's not vacation or planned time off.
Okay. And then the COVID testing itself, I would assume you would know when that would occur for an individual employer. Maybe you don't.
We, you know, we've gone beyond testing now. Our employees, we test as appropriate. It's really now been the vaccination. And because they, most of the vaccinations require two doses, we don't know what to anticipate after the first dose and how much time an individual driver is going to take of that allowable time from the state. So if they take the max time twice, that's, I think, like 30 days, I think, is time, two weeks per, yeah. So four weeks of time off that we didn't anticipate. That on top of already having fewer drivers because of this, the labor shortage in our nation right now, has really compacted services in every jurisdiction we serve, no matter what hauler any jurisdiction has. Every hauler is struggling with the same issue.
And then drivers not familiar with the routes, can you elaborate on that one?
Yes, anytime you have a relief driver or a backup driver that's unfamiliar with the nuances of where an enclosure is located or, you know, if you needed a gate, code to get in a gate or things like that. Sometimes relief drivers that aren't familiar with the areas miss those pickups because it's a hidden bin or they had an agreement with the property owner that they would do something unique and special related to that property. You lose that institutional knowledge, that community knowledge, every time you have a relief driver, which can result in missed pickups. Largely just because of the familiarity with the route.
And then, I mean, at the end of the day, we all know the issues and the, you know, reasons why some of these things are happening. But at this point, I mean, all of us are responsible to all of our ratepayers and we got to answer it. So what are, what's going on with CRNR to make the improved changes? We heard communication, but at the end of the day, we want the pickups to be made. So what, what can you help us explain to our folks?
Yes, understood, Director Echols. The community, it starts with communication. We have to manage the expectations of your staff so that you have no surprises when you get called by a neighbor or a business. That's changed immediately, effective immediately. That's part of ownership's change of bringing Julie and I into this process to make sure that we're with operations every day so that they're communicating up and we can communicate to you. As an elected official, I understand the demands that you have and the responsibility you have, your constituency. And I'm looking at your core values of transparency, dedication. And what I can tell you is we are, we are here to be transparent. If we, no hauler, no business wants to not complete the job. What we're doing at CRNR, we're doing what every other employer is doing right now. We're offering sign-on bonuses for positions. We're, we're recruiting in most unusual ways. I'm not an HR professional, but every time there's a job on my LinkedIn. I'm not an HR professional, but every time there's a job on my LinkedIn, I post the job that we're hiring for. I posted on all of my own personal social media. It's just a unique time. And so to be honest, Director Eccles, as an elected official, I just ask that you ask your public to be patient. If we miss a pickup, please ask them to leave it out and our operations team will come get it the following day. And if we can't, we will notify Scott as to when it will be picked up. It's really about most public, most of the public in all of our jurisdictions that we've been working with, they understand what we're going through and they'll be patient so long as they know what to do. And if we tell them what to do, sorry, we missed your green waste, leave it out, we'll be there tomorrow. That's all they want. And so being able to manage their expectations and give them the direction as to what happens if we do miss, I think makes a lot of the angst go away.
And I'll wrap up just with one last thing. So I appreciate everything you said. Assuming that the labor shortage is going to be here for a while, because it probably will be, what's plan B in your corporation? Like, hey, we know we're going to have less people to hire, no matter how much we post and offer incentives and all that. What what can be done to at least improve upon the numbers with the labor that you have?
And I think the general manager, Mr. Carroll, kind of alluded to the fact, it's kind of a shifting of resources, right? And so right now, what we're trying to do is utilize those resources to the fullest. And we're paying a lot of drivers a lot of overtime to make sure that we're utilizing every possible option. So absent a driver for every route, we are maximizing and stretching every driver to the allowable Department of Transportation number of hours that they can drive. That's probably the most we can do with the resources we have at this at this moment. And and I don't have a crystal ball as to when this is going to end. I know every holler in nearly every industry would like people to come back to work. It's just, it's a, it's an unprecedented time. We've never seen anything like this.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question before you leave. I have a curiosity. Going back to leaving out the trash for another day. The problem with that is the next day is sweet streeting day. And what happens with that is we get the calls. I mean, we're just bombarded with different calls from different people, you know, they're, they want their street cleaned, you know? And so, you know, we almost need to find out a solution to this because leaving it out, they don't, they all know that everybody leaves it out. But they call you to say, I'm leaving it out. I didn't get picked up. And then the next caller is the sweet, sweet treatment problem.
Yeah, Secretary Schaefer, I I agree. It's imperfect and it, there is a ripple effect of all of these challenges. All I could say is we are trying our best to avoid that situation. And your help by managing your constituents' expectations will certainly go a long way in this. At this point, I have no other explanation for that.
Well, the only other thing I'm thinking is we have a newsletter that comes out and that if you coordinate with Scott as far as a piece in that newspaper saying, you know, what we're doing, we're trying and.
That's a great idea. And again, the more we can communicate to the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board and staff, as well as your public, the better. And so we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I actually have the perfect solution for you. Quit missing the guys that call in a lot.
We've noted those streets.
I'm being very facetious with that, but you you obviously know that we get the phone calls from certain individuals. In fact, there's one individual who is pretty outspoken in our in our public, and he does videos. And he 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 asked me to do a PSA about what's going on with missed collections. I'm not going to do that. I mean, that's not my place to do. That's that's you guys and that's the general manager. I'm not going to do that. But he he is promoting the fact that all of, that your biggest problem and all of your drivers aren't working because they make more off unemployment. That's kind of a trait that we've heard that a lot from all over, that people are staying home because they're making more on unemployment. We have no control of that, neither do, obviously, neither do you. It it just, I I guess I'm, what I'm telling you is be ready for phone calls directly to you guys from these folks that want to be more outspoken than, you know, Scott just said something that I hadn't thought about, but is really relevant. We know you're going to be, I mean, for the most part, your drivers are outstanding. I've seen drivers in my neighborhood get out of their trucks and pick up something that someone like a bag or 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 something that someone is, they don't have to do that. They're not required by their contract to do it, but they do it. So I think you have a lot of really conscientious drivers out there. I know the gentleman that does my neighborhood. He waves. I mean, that's really good PR, not just for you, but for us, because we're the ones picking, you know, responsible to get you to pick it up. It it was really strange last week going in my neighborhood, and I've told Scott this. Coming home from my office, I noticed a lot of cans that were way out in the street or hadn't, you know, for the most part, they pick them up and put them right back down where they were. But there were a lot that were askew or out in the street, several that were laying on their sides. So maybe we had a substitute driver last week. But the oddest thing in my near, and almost universally in my neighborhood last week, all of the organic carts, the lids were flopped back. That never happens. They're always closed. And I don't, I don't know if that was an anomaly or what was, but it was just so strange to see those green lids open. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Mr. Vice President, I appreciate your compliments of our drivers, and they are our number one ambassadors, as you're a number one ambassadors for the for the district as it relates to this service. And our standards are high. And there is no excuse for a relief driver doing anything that you just described. They know the lift that have it set down back where it was and have the lids closed. I will not make an excuse. I will certainly offer that it may have been a relief driver. And every driver right now is under a tremendous amount of pressure to pick everything up as quickly as they can so they don't go over their allowable hours. As it relates to members of your community, in an effort to make sure that you are insulated from a lot of this criticism, we welcome them to call Julie or myself directly. And we will leave you our business card so that if there are any disgruntled residents or customers, you just give them our number and we will come out and and visit their home and talk to them. It it's going to take all of us to resolve this. It's going to take a lot of patience from everyone. And we're going to have to do things differently by managing from in the field than rather than at our desk. And we're willing to do that. And I think ownership has made that commitment by sending Julie and I here. And and again, Julie mentioned Costa Mesa Sanitary District is a really important customer to our ownership.
And Chip, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you saying that you don't have any excuses. We're not looking for excuses. I mean, we, I think we're reasonable enough to understand what what the reality is. I think it really gets a lot, back a lot to the communications part of it. And I think we have a pretty good conduit for that between CRNR and 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 our district. So to me, that's where the work has to come. And I think, like Director Eccles said, if there's something that we don't know about, make sure we know about it. And and we can, it it's not that hard to deal with the people who call and say, my trash got picked up or got missed. What we probably don't tell you enough is a lot of those people will call back the next day and say, hey, thanks for taking care of that. You know, so it goes both ways. I mean, we do get calls back from those same people saying, hey, the trash truck was just here, you know? And the other thing, just real quick, you mentioned your drivers being ambassadors. All you got to do is go on YouTube or one of Facebook, and you always see these little vignettes of drivers, you know? My youngest grandson, when he was living here in Costa Mesa, he knew what day trash day was, and he sat on the back of the couch because he loved, you know, the driver would wave at him. So I think that's a key component is that those drivers continue to be the good ambassadors and reflect on us and you. So I appreciate you saying that.
I have just one more, sorry. And I know it's August and Christmas is right around the corner. It just somehow works that way.
You can tell he has little kids.
Exactly. Yep. So I I get reminded already. So that was one, you know, I was first seated and I was like, holy moly, Christmas trees. And driving up and down my streets, I was like, we've got a health hazard, we've got a fire hazard, and we've got a lot of upset residents. And so one of my things in talking with Scott, if if the Christmas trees weren't going to get picked up, blah, 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 let's get a date. All right, everyone could understand. All right, can you pick it up next Tuesday or whatever? So I just throw this out there that you got, we got to have this plan in place now. Assuming that, you know, the labor shortage is going to continue, all the other stuff, but got to get a plan for those Christmas trees because I would hate to see. We see it over, you know, Fairview and Talbert Reserve and all. You get these fires. I'm not kidding. A Christmas tree in my own home, I worry about. I'm like, get it out of here. Because I don't, you know, I like my home. I don't want it burned down. Imagine the streets and someone, whatever. So that's, to me, a real thing we have to plan for. So please, please, whatever that's going to be, if things are going to get missed, let's get a plan that we can post on websites and social media.
Newsletter.
Newsletter, whatever it takes. So just to throw that out there.
I appreciate that. I'm sure Mike is probably well aware, but Chip and I are not. So we will definitely make sure that is on the agenda. Probably, I'd say, starting, Scott, in September with our monthly operation meetings, and we'll start talking about our plan, Plan A, B, and C, should one one fail. But we hope that, like I said, hoping that people want to get back to work instead of sitting at home come come that time of the year. So we'll be positive and optimistic, fingers crossed. But again, we we thank you for the opportunity to be here. As I mentioned earlier, rather be under a better circumstance to start off our first introduction, but we assure you, we are, we are going to fix things and and our ownership is dedicated to the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, and and we're going to make this right.
You know, I I think he's on the line, so I'm going to say this. You two are a lot easier to look at than Dean Ruffre. We we appreciate.
Dean is a great guy. I worked for Dean thirty years ago. So he was one of my first bosses in the trash business. So Dean's still around and Mike's still there.
You succeeded anyway. Congratulations.
I'm sure we'll hear from him after.
I'm sure we'll get a hand raised. We do have someone in the public that would like to make a comment. So Nolani, Mr. Mosher, has a public comment. Sir?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Schaefer. First, although the general manager mentioned that you would be returning to in-person meetings today, there was nothing on the agenda that said that. So I assumed this was a Zoom-only meeting. And I wanted to let you know those trying to attend by Zoom, this is much more difficult to hear than the previous Zoom meetings. So please, everybody speak into the microphones. The comment I wanted to make on this is that General Manager Carroll mentioned one of the reasons for missed trash pickups was it's there was an adjacent parked car and the driver was leery of causing damage to the car. So I'm wondering if, under your contract, there is an expectation that the driver would get out of the truck and move the cart out to where it could be safely picked up. Because for your information, contrary to the Sanitary District contract, in the Newport Beach contract, there is an expectation that the driver will get out to pick up excess bagged or boxed trash, which they, after emptying the original cart, they put it into the cart and emptied the bagged trash. So I would, I was wondering why they would not be going out of their way to move the cart when there is a parked car blocking it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure it's not in our contract.
Correct. We don't have that stipulation in our contract.
And from a safety standpoint, I'm not sure why it would be in the Newport contract.
Again, I don't know either. I don't, wasn't part of those negotiations. It's something that we can address in our monthly meetings with CRNR.
That I I, you know, I I think it's a good point. And if Newport has it in their contract, again, from a worker's comp or a safety standpoint, that seems a little difficult to me. I, I'm not sure why people have to park their cars right, right? Again, they know when trash day is, and you'd think they'd have a little consideration, but it's something you guys can talk about.
Yes, and just and just for the boards and the public's information, I did have a discussion with the city yesterday regarding this issue, seeing that we can do something jointly to to discourage residents to park their cars close to to the to the carts. Maybe we do a joint letter. I don't know. I I I am having David go out Thursday. There's a, there's a particular neighborhood that we're aware of that has carts, close, cars parked too close to carts, which is on Thursday collections. And so David's going to go and and inspect and report back to me.
That'd be great. You know, again, as Mr. Moser said, if Newport has a provision where the driver gets out and picks up bags and boxes and things, if if we, if we start doing that, we starting allowing it, then people aren't going to put their trash in the bin. They're just going to, you know what I mean? They're just going to stick it out on the curb and expect you guys to pick it up. And I, I have a problem with that. So, you know, in my opinion. Okay, any further discussion on the item?
Good presentation.
Yeah, Chip, Julie, thank you very much for taking the time. So you're, are you an Oregon State duck? That little orange, that little orange circle on your mask. Oh, you're an elected official in the City of Orange, right? So you understand, I mean, you 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 know what I want. Thank you for that.
Julie, you going to pass on some cards?
Okay, good. I thought your name sounded. I apologize for my recognizing you in front of her. No, it's not your face, your name. I mean, I I apologize, Chip, for not, for not bringing that up. And always, Mr. Carey, if 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 part of his contract, you could get him to quit rooting for certain football teams and baseball teams, I'd certainly appreciate that. Thanks for being here, Michael. Okay, we're going to now take item two and review the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee meeting. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So on July twenty-second of this year, the the Ad Hoc Committee met to discuss and strategize how the district can assist the the cities of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach being compliant with SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the California Short-lived Climate Polluting Reduction Strategy. And it is a strategy to reduce methane gas in in the environment. On the, serving on the CAC is President Uten, Vice President Schaefer, and then Citizens Advisor Committee Member Chair Ellie Katz and CAC Member Mike Corcoran? Corran, Cochran. I can never get someone's last name right. Yes, Cochran. Thank you. Thank you. So we met on on July, on on July twenty-second. And prior to our meeting, we did enter an agreement with Mike Bya Consulting to assist us with developing policy programs to be in compliance with this new law, which goes into effect in less than six months. It goes into effect on on January twenty twenty-two. The the law is really, for us, our, as you can see in the in the staff report, there really the the law is 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 responsible for the cities. The cities are really responsible in putting this law. However, we are, we are needed to assist the cities come in compliance. And there was really two, two things that we need to do in twenty twenty-two to help be in compliance. First, beginning in twenty twenty-two, we need to start monitoring what's being disposed of in the carts. We cannot have contaminations, right? That's part of the law is they want to prevent people from contaminating their organics with trash, right? It has to be clean organics. And so we need to monitor what people are disposing, and then we need to give them warnings in saying, you know, you're not, you're not disposing your organics properly. If you continue doing this, by twenty twenty-four, you're going to get fined. And the state really wants cities coming down. If you continue doing this by 2024, you're going to get fined. And the state really wants cities coming down hard on residents. They specifically said, you're going to find them. Now that's another issue we need to address with the city. Who's going to be the organization that's responsible for finding? Cause we, we can find residents. We have that in our code. But, but with something we need to work out with, with the city. The other requirement we need to, we need to do in 2022 is public education, public outreach. We need to really go out there in public outreach and, and stress the, the climate impacts that methane ga- gas has on the environment. And that's what really we have to stress in our, in community outreach. And it has to be bilingual. You know, since we do have 30% of our population is Spanish speaking, it must be bilingual. And so we must show that we are aggressively educating our public about this new requirement. So the, that was some of the discussions we had at the ad hoc committee. Mike Bya gave a great presentation. You could see it on our YouTube channel. In the end, the committee recommended that we develop a, I guess you'd call it an SB 1383 strategic plan. And it will identify some goals that we, we wanted to achieve. And so Mike Bya is gonna, is gonna start that endeavor. We, actually, we have, Nabil and I have a meeting with him scheduled for tomorrow to kick that off. And then we will present that draft plan to, to the board and to the CAC before implementation. So, so that was pretty much the gist of, of the ad hoc committee. Is Vice President Schaefer wants to add anything, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let me just add a couple of things. The SAFE 1383 is onerous, I think is a pretty broad statement. I think it is going to be onerous. It kind of, we, we had talked a little bit at ad hoc meeting about the fact that David works part-time as a code enforcement officer. We may have to shift David to a full-time code enforcement officer because he's going to be forced to look in trash cans. I mean, we, we've never done that. We've never gone around with our code enforcement. They had them physically. I mean, Nabil, we've done some studies where we've looked inside, but I mean, it was studies. Now we're going to be trash cops. And, and, and it's going to be a, a hard, hard thing to do, I think. That's coming. I mean, I don't, I don't think we're going to get away from that. I appreciate what Scott said about the, the finding situation. We really want to get into that? We really want to find people for putting, you know, my wife came in the other day. We, our, our trash is picked up on Thursday. And she came in and this was, was the open, okay, she says, you know what someone just put in the, in the organics bin? She said there were some cups, you know, with straws and someone's doggy waste bag. You know, are, do we really want to be in a place to say, okay, here's your $100 fine for putting your dog mess in your, I, I mean, I guess the dog mess is okay. It's the bag that's the problem, right? Please don't open your bag and pour it into my trash can. So this, we got a lot of work to do. And I, and I think President Newton and I, I think we're going to come back to some recommendations, but it's going to be some work. And the more, I, I, I think one of the things I said that morning was it's really going to be important that we get the city on board with this because they're the, they're the ones that have to accept the responsibility for, for all of the, the reports and the fines and everything else. Fines coming the other way, right? So Bob and I are both excited about getting this. And I, I think we have two really competent CAC members that are going to provide an L of the, Ellie's pretty sharp and, and Mr. Corcoran is too. So I think we'll get some good, good things for the, for the board out there.
I just wanted to say that I'm at dog.
Mess?
That actually, you know, you can buy the bags that are, they're just dissolved. Because I have them. They're, they're really good. And you don't have to worry. You just have to train people to do that. But I agree with you on the part that I look out my window sometimes and son of a gun, there they are walking with a dog and they throw the stuff in and I'm going to get fined for that. So.
It, it's in your hand.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I just think it'd be nice to give a warning to start out with so that everybody's aware of this. And then worry about it from there. Because see what, what you establish with your warnings, but not come on just so hard.
Okay, Scott, now it's also the green waste in the regular trash cans. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's where we need to really focus also because I know all these gardeners in these complexes dump the grass, what they're cutting into the regular trash cans. There's no other trash can provided.
Correct. When we're saying monitoring, we're meaning monitoring both mixed waste carts and the organics.
As we had talked about this before, my number of different locations, having green waste cans there for the gardeners to dump it in. I don't think we progressed that far yet.
Right.
I think that would be one of the things that could help us.
Yes, definitely.
That is because the green waste, I'm, I'm thinking of one location.
When I was with the city, what we did one time, we turned around and had a meeting with the gardeners. Amazing how they all turned out because they were scared. They didn't want to lose what they got going. But this is the time that you can list all the things.
Closer to your microphone. Get closer to your microphone. Bring it in.
This is a time that is perfect to turn around and list for the gardeners. What is going on communicating with them because of what is allowed in the trash, what isn't? Because even the shrubbery, they stick in the wrong can. Sometimes they get carried away. So.
Uh, great. Just two things. I agree with Vice President Schaefer. We really going to start finding and ticketing people? That's going to be our role and responsibility. If someone I know really close used to throw doggy bags in along the walk. If I get fined because one of my neighbors dumped their stuff in my, I mean, come, I mean, it's, it's literally, it seems silly, but that's a valid point. So I'll be curious to see what you all in the committee.
Yeah, I live on a corner, so I, I, I have to be careful because I'm, I'm glad they put it in the can and well, because a lot of them just leave it in my yard, you know?
Exactly. So yeah, it's improved over years. At least it's not on my front doorstep. But, and then a, a question. So we have residential communities, say like in the gated complex, some of the newer developments and they just have a big bin. They don't have even space to have in organics and things like that. So what are we looking at for those sorts of smaller communities?
I have an idea. I was always thinking OCC, could you, you know, CRNR could use OCC as a dump site for all the gardeners in Costa Mesa. And that could be either our expense or the gardener's expense. I don't know how that would work out, but I thought that would be a perfect location because they're already working with OCC. And have that as a centralized location, have a meeting with all the gardeners, say, hey, instead of dumping it in the regular trash cans, you take it to OCC and dump it. You know, that's, that would be a perfect thing. Or, or the city, I think.
Or the city yard.
The city yard would be a better option because that stuff stinks, you know? And have it at OCC.
But it could be dropped, picked up every day.
Uh, yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, if, if we have to go to that extent, that's how we could do it. It's one idea.
Yeah, but I, I think, I agree. Yeah, I absolutely agree. But I think the city yard would be an option that they need to put on that checklist as well.
It's just that they're used to going to OCC already, you know? And they have room in the back, don't they, Mike? And they're not, are they using that other area now, the old area or something?
I, I know.
One other thing.
Yeah.
When we start, I, I wouldn't mind having a study session where we can give our opinions too when you meet with the ad hoc committee, you know?
We, we actually talked about that, Bob and I.
Well, uh, real quick, can, can I just get, get Scott's answer if you have one?
Sure. First, I think we needed to distinguish the difference between bins and carts.
Right.
Okay. Bins are like three yard, bins, three yards. They're usually for commercial and multi-communities. Those are our customers. We have carts.
Right.
Which are the curbside carts. So if there are bin services, it's not our purview. It'd be worse for the city. Now, maybe the city could be working in their ordinance that they could give a waiver. And that's something that Mike Bya suggested to us at the ad hoc committee. For our customers, if they don't have space for additional organic carts, so we can issue waivers, something we need to consider. That's something the city could also as well.
Okay. Yeah. And, and I understand that wasn't under our purview, but as a city, we're all responsible. So that's, I was curious, that's gonna, that's an issue out there in the community.
In, in our understanding, the city's going to be, or the staff is going to be bringing the city council, oppose ordinance on, on SB 1383. And so we're going to, we're looking forward to reading that ordinance because we'd want to, we adopt our ordinance, we're going to want it mirror pretty much the same. So there's no conflict or ambiguity when we're trying to enforce this, this new law that both cities Newport Beach and Costa Mesa are on the same page with us or vice versa.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Um, I, Mr. Moser, I know you're on the line. We have one more. Julie from CRNR is going to talk, then I'll go to Mr. Moser. Julie?
Thank you, Vice President Schaefer. I just wanted to add, we are here and ready to assist to be part of these ad hoc meetings, the breakout sessions. Happy to meet with staff, with Mr. Ballier. We, Chip, I, Chip myself and Mike have met with several jurisdictions because this is the focus point. We've got five short months left to have this ready to go. I think the nice thing is to address everything you've discussed about, you know, the finding that's coming in 2024. Really, it was mentioned at the beginning, a lot of education has to take place, a lot of outreach to the residents on what goes in those carts. Basically, we have two years. We have two years to educate, to let them know what you can and cannot do before those, before those fines come. And maybe it's the friendly conversation with the neighbor that says, hey, you know what? You can't dump your stuff in my bin anymore. The city's going to be fining. And anyway, I just wanted to offer and share, we are, we, we have plans developed that we, we're, you know, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of, let's not reinvent the wheel. If, if we have something that we can help provide that another jurisdiction or another sanitary district has looked at or doing, we would love to share that information with you as well.
We appreciate that. And whatever happened to the locking trash cans? Do we still have people out there with locking trash cans?
We have a few. Yes, yes. They're, they're still available.
Uh, Mr. Moser, if you have a comment?
Uh, yes. Thank you again, Vice President Schaefer. Uh, I, I watched the ad hoc committee video last night and I had three comments. First one, I, I noticed that Mr. Ballier in his presentation continues to refer to the 20 million tons of landfill organics that need to be reduced to 5 million tons. I'm pretty sure when he quotes those numbers, he's talking about statewide totals. And so I continued to be curious whether the district has gotten from him information as to how much the city's organics component is so that we know how much the residential part picked up by the district compares to the Costa Mesa city's overall organics load, which I think is the thing that is supposed to be reduced by 75%. It, it would be good to know if this district's organics total is a big or small fraction of that. The second thing he mentioned that if the district was to continue with its two cart system, the mixed cart with trash and recyclables would have to go to a MRF that had been certified to recover at least 75% of the organics out of those carts. And I'm wondering if he was quoting that correctly and if those carts individually have to be 75% recovered or that's an overall goal for the district rather than for the mixed carts alone. And then finally, as to the viability of the two cart system, since the great majority of the districts' organics are already in what we call the organics cart, you would think the district is already in compliance, but I think he was pointing out that the cardboard and paper, which goes in the mixed waste cart, even though we think of organics as one thing, those under uh, this state legislation, the paper, and I assume cardboard is regarded as part of the organics. So is that the sticking point of staying with the two cart system? And is there any way that CRNR could accept all the organics in a single cart, including the paper and cardboard? Or is the only way to have a three cart system? I, I was not clear on that watching the presentation. So those are my three comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any response? I mean, we're not going to put cardboard in the organics cart. With the AV process, that, that's going to contaminate it big time. So Scott, any comments or anything you need to follow up with Mr. Moser?
Sure. We'll, we'll, we'll follow Mr. Moser and the board regarding the city's total organics load and, and, and how much, what's, what is the, the amount of tonnage we need to divert? We'll, we'll get that information to the board and to, to Mr. Moser. The, the two cart system, again, we're still evaluating that system. CRNR is, is requesting or suggesting that we do go a three cart system, but as I mentioned before, that is a huge behavioral change in our community. And before we go down that road, I, I think it's important for us to engage with our residents. And that's why we, we should do a citizen survey of residents, which we are currently reviewing bids that we received yesterday. And then that will give us a good indication, should we go down that road or not. So, so that's still being evaluated. Um, and I think Vice President Schaefer is correct. Cardboard and paper is not part of organics. But I think I can understand the confusion because sometimes you do see that material, say it's made out of compostable materials, right? Well, now can I throw that in organics? And again, this goes back to, to the educational part that we need to educate the public. What goes in and what cannot go in.
Just to, from that standpoint, I noticed on the news the other night, and I don't remember which city it was. There's a couple of cities that, you know, there's starting to be a bigger push with no styrofoam, you know, and I know at the fair the other night I had a paper straw. It's not last for a while. I mean, I, some of these places, Anaheim Stadium, for example, they don't give you a straw. They put a lid on that's got like a lip. And you know, it's, you know what it reminds me of, don't you? A sippy cup. It's just like a sippy cup. So, which is probably what they should put on the beer instead of the soda, but we're moving, there's, there's so many changes that are going to happen. That's all we need to do is put styrofoam in on, in the organic skirts. I didn't really miss any of that. So.
Just a better question. You know, you were talking about the city organics program. Do they have an organics program?
They do. They have one for their, they have to, for their commercial side. They do have an organic recycling program.
I'd like to see those totals too. See what the city does produce in organics.
All right. Um, any other discussion on item two? I, I expect you'll be getting a lot more information. And I know Mike's participated with us on that. So we, we certainly do appreciate the, the input. All right. We'll move to closing items. Any comments or communications from any of the directors? Go ahead.
Again, thank you both for attending. It means a lot. So I really appreciate you being here and it's a pleasure to meet both of you in person. And again, thanks to our staff, especially for making this room the AV and obviously everything's got some kinks, but great job. So we can do this hybrid and I'm sure each one will get better and better. And it's nice to finally sit up here and see everyone face to face. Computers are great and all, but actually see someone up close and personal and it's nice. So it's an honor to be up here with everyone. And again, thank you for being here and thanks to the staff for getting us in here and getting things rolling.
You just remember, this isn't like the city hall die. As, as a parks commissioner, we both sat up there and that's bulletproof. This isn't.
Yeah, that's true.
I want you to remind you of that.
That was the first training I had as a parks commissioner was you dive under and it's bulletproof. So maybe we, no, no, I think we'll be all right. We've got some.
I, I think when I was on, when I was on the city council, I think we had just installed that and city manager said, you know, if anything happens, just it's okay for me to go down. Getting me back up is always, is always the issue.
So, yeah, we, we better not really screw up this organics program. We've got fired up people. So.
Go ahead, Ernie.
I just wanted to thank you, all three of you for really being part of this program today. It meant a lot because it kind of eased up our feelings on certain things, I'm sure. And certain items that we're looking to you to come through for us. It's very important. And we all need to work together as a team. So that's really great. And, and Scott's a great one to be able to lead the theme. So.
No pressure. No pressure at all. No pressure. The only comment I had, other than thank you. You have a gem here. I mean, and he's intimately involved with this community. And if, if he's up for a raise, give him a raise. He's got to pay, he's got to, he's got to pay his insurance premiums. Again, thank you for taking the time to be with us this morning. And if Dean's still on the line, Dean, we miss you. Mr. Mosher made a comment about no communication about this being a live meeting. It was announced several times, I believe. Even on our previous Zoom meetings, we said that August would be back live.
Yeah, I'll talk to the staff. I think the confusion might be that, it didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, does it say we're going to be in person or it just said Zoom? Yeah, I think we'll look at it again, so.
But we did say it orally too.
Yes, but it's, but not everyone can hear what you're saying. So we need to put something in writing to say, hey, this is, this is an in-person Zoom meeting. So you can do either or.
Yeah, I know several, several of the meetings that I've attended over the last couple of weeks, whether the OCAG or whatever, they were hybrid meetings. So this is kind of what's going on.
Yes, this is, this is the way of the future.
And I'm sorry, the one thing, just the staff report, I think that's where it maybe needs to be said. So when people download it and all that, because we are right, we verbally spoke about it, but, yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn the study session. Thank you.